Agenda order and approval addition? And I request that we move item O, Schedule School Board Retreat, up after item F. I think that it would be a good idea to have some idea in mind when we're going to have that retreat before we go into those policy discussions. I think that it's important that we, I think the retreat is critically important for us to get to know each other and so we can start getting, so we have an idea of when we're going to be doing that and we start talking about the science.
Are you making this a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second time?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Roll call, hold on a minute.
If you request a roll call, you do roll call.
We do roll call, okay. Yep. Henny?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tricia?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay, so we will move, O, up to now, it will be G.
Is that in the motion? Can you just request a roll?
You can with the consent agenda, but I'm not sure about the rest. I have to bring that up. I think Dave's correct, but it doesn't hurt to take the bullet and not make sure, relax. Okay. What do we have, Amy?
Okay. All right, so do we have any community communications? I didn't receive any. Okay, so no community communications. Okay, Dr. Joe, board members, should there be any communication? Any board members first? Hey.
I, well, myself and many other board members were at Band-Aid Rama and it was incredibly well done having the UWO Claire marching band, Blue Gold marching band come was outstanding and the band directors did an outstanding job. It was really an impressive night. It was good seeing, it was really fun because it wasn't actually a school board night, so I was able to be the real deal, so, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was incredible, you know, the band directors actually talked about the growth in the music department and so anybody that says we don't have enough hours to, that type of thing going on in our district, they need to do something like that and just take our foot because it was incredible what the kids did and you could see the growth that we've had in our district over the last few years. It was awesome.
Thanks.
I'll chime in, it was especially good, the sixth grade, uh, clarinet section was awesome. That was a question.
You don't have daughters?
Maybe, perhaps, but, no.
New member, Chris Freeman and I actually went down to Wasby, new member, orientation down in Durand on Thursday, which I thought was excellent. I thought they did a good job explaining policies and kind of how to keep us out of hot water for most part, so I thought it was good. We got to meet Chris a little bit more too, so.
It was a good night and they gave us particular feedback on our issues which will keep us out of hot water. It was good.
Thank you for doing that, appreciate it very much. Jim?
And Friday I will be at the environmental site and working with middle schoolers for the Earth Day project and they'll be playing all about American history and impact and skills, so we'll see you, Mr. Betcher.
Any other board members? Okay. May I have a question?
So the board took a lot of my Band-Aid Rama comments, but there was a lot of other things, Science Olympiad, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, the elementary Science Olympiad event at the middle school was just terrific to see that many of our students taking part in activity like that. Really appreciate all the work of our staff and the community members who volunteered to be there that day. Also, you all know that we've had some issues with board docs periodically, it's been much more reliable, however, when we were preparing for the last board meeting, it was really slow and it was cumbersome and difficult for us to work with. Jamie did a great job calling and we've been issued a credit and Board Doc has installed a new server, is our understanding, and the performance should be better and better, so we're pleased with that and we'll continue to stay on top of that. In a recent survey of teachers in our school district, it appears that 28 of our teachers are approaching the completion of their master's degree programs. We're extremely excited about that as well. A lot of schools since Act 10 have not prioritized additional education like we have here in the SDMA and we're very, very proud of our teachers for doing that, so it can be a large final step to actually complete the program, but we are keeping track of that and we're also, you know, monitoring how that's going to impact our budget for next year, so, you know, we think that's a very good thing. Lastly, the School Board Association has put out the call for proposals for presenting at the School Board Convention in January. If anybody has a particular topic that they're interested in presenting on, you can sign up as an individual or if there's something that the board is interested in or something I can help facilitate, please just reach out. The deadline isn't until June, so there's plenty of time, but I wanted to just get that under everyone's radar.
Okay, so, Jim?
I have a question. How many of those teachers are through that culvert that we organized without coming there, like in the center?
Do you know the exact number, Brian?
I would have to look to get the exact number.
Just, what's the estimate?
I would say there's probably five that are getting theirs through different venues, but most of them are getting them through the culverts.
Do you have any plans to, to start a new cycle?
We do, and actually, there's a meeting, when's the meeting?
We already have one informational meeting and both staff are in the process of making their application as to whether or not they're going to jump up board with that, so if we see if we have enough for minority only, oh, sorry, thank you. So, staff are in the process of, you know, the application process.
Great. Okay, so if anyone has any ideas for the convention, I would contact Joe directly and go there. Thank you. Okay, next, personnel consent agenda. I entertain action to approve the personnel consent agenda. Move to me.
Second.
Amy?
Before you vote on that, Amy, I just want to point out to the board that there was an addition. We are requesting that Diana Hadley, who is the retired district accountant, we would like to have her come back and help provide some training, so that was added.
Do we have to, do we ask everybody in that 75, do you stuff with us?
No, no. It's been, it's been considered.
Okay.
Great question though. Any discussion on that? Okay, Jamie, I mean, yeah, Jamie.
So, Chris, the online voting.
I want to say a special thank you to those that have been doing interviews and hiring. Sam, thank you very much, I know it's hard work, busy time of the year, thank you for your work, much appreciated.
Very, very.
Okay, next, action agenda. We have one item, it's timely, so that's why we have them there, and it's the action to approve a national contest for middle school FCC LA students, so I have a motion for that. Penny? Dan? Okay, Joe, you want to explain?
Sure, we have a seventh grade student, Mr. Betcher forward the request, asking to participate in the national FCC LA competition this summer in California. There is not going to be a cost to the school district and the parent will be with to supervise, but approval is necessary so the student participates as a representative of the school district. We are approving, or recommending the approval.
Any discussion? Okay, let's go. I think it would be really neat if we could have that student perhaps maybe come and share something about the event when they come back.
It's a nice idea.
Would that be okay, Mr. Betcher still here? Would that be okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, we ran along discussion, IMA, SDMA, Environmental Site Report.
Brian, go ahead.
All right, so this is a follow-up to the mid-year update that was provided to the board earlier in the year in school year related to the two major goals that are taking place out at the environmental site, specifically to studying the use of the site and possible program improvements out at the site to be implemented nowhere in the next school year. And then the second goal of taking a look at invasive species at the environmental site and a follow-up as far as results and recommended actions, you know, as far as how we're going to go forward with that. So, our environmental site coordinator Seth Stancheck is here as well to assist with answering questions related to this, but what we've done is to try and streamline this a little bit is put together a two-page document of some of the major activities that have taken place, either been completed or are planned, and specific to goal one, taking a look at possible improvements for next school year. This comes off of a work plan that Seth, myself, and our director of buildings and grounds that we've been working off of to take a look at what are some of the major things that we need to do, and I know, Jim, you've been involved in some of the ongoing discussion with that, and Seth has been doing a great job of keeping on top of those items that are included as well as making some recommendations for things to be done out there. Couple things I want to point out, we are in the process of making plans during the next school year to make some repairs to the camping cabins that are out there. We also have a Boy Scout who's working on an Eagle Scout project out there to complete what's referred to as a tiny house to make a handicap accessible cabin out on the property. Yeah, I know our director, director of buildings and grounds has been involved in a review of some of the work that's been being done out there, and the goal for that is for that to be done within the next, the next year with the bulk of that happening over the course of the summer. We are going to be involving our high school tech ed students with some of the benches and picnic tables that need to be updated out there as well, looking at the purchase of a trail mower so that while Seth is out at the site as well as other staff who may be performing maintenance at the site can better maintain our existing trails and get some of the trails that have a lot of overgrowth on them open back up and use them with the UTV that's out there, what our staff refer to as a ranger, so we're looking at that. In addition, our ongoing work with the DNR as far as the forest management plan that's still being reviewed, we haven't completed the update of that, that will happen as part of the timber sale that's forthcoming, but we've been identifying ways to incorporate our students in some of that work. We've had a group that was out there with DNR foresters and Seth as far as the initial tree marking that took place this winter and then looked at some opportunities once the harvest is done as far as some of the replanting that's going to take place potentially in a few areas as well as some, some other items such as a deer enclosure for environmental education opportunities in that. As far as programmatically, we've had some meetings with staff to review what some past practice had been out at the site as well as some recommended types of activities, so throughout the next school year, we are working on not just specific to the environmental site, but throughout the district, updating and in some cases the development of a K-12 environmental education curriculum map that can be utilized both out at the site but then also within some of our other school properties as well as well as the classroom itself. And then I had a couple of meetings with representatives from LCIP, Seth was a part of that, you know, as you recall in our mid-year update, the idea of bringing in a commercial provider to do some work as far as eradication of invasives, their recommendation was that we look at incorporating it more into our instructional programming, so that's the route that at this point in time we are, we are working on, you know, so we've had an initial meeting and then we're also looking at involvement of local universities as well as extension in that process as well and making that part of our forest management plan as we move forward, have the idea that not only do students learn about invasives, but they have the opportunity to, in some cases, help with the polling of invasives while they're out there. I know the group that's going out on Friday of this week that that's one of the things that they're, they're hopeful that they're going to be able to spend some time doing while they're out there as well. And then, you know, as we go on and we take a look at goal number two, that's specific to the work with the invasives, it, you know, outlines some of the work that we've already done and again highlighting some of the involvement into the curriculum. I know one of the things that we wanted to get a better handle on was what is our student usage out at the site? So, we, we have one full year of data, last year, the 17, 18 school year, where we were, we found that the average stay per student was 6.9 hours, you know, while this year is not done, so it's an estimate based off of reservations that have been made out at the site yet this spring, looks like we're going to be trending very close to the average stay per student at about the same amount, going up a tenth of an hour, you know, seven hours out there. What we are finding, or what we found this year is it looks like we might be down, you know, down a little bit as far as the number of students, but it translates to when they're out there, they're out there a little bit longer. I know one of the questions that came up at the midpoint of the year, I think, Dave, you may have asked the question, should we reevaluate, you know, what the goal is as far as the number of students that are out, or not the number of students, but the, the goal for the number of hours? You know, I'd like for us to get through one more year of a monitor like this and then potentially come back and establish what we think our goal of usage is. I know in conversation with staff, one of the, one of the pieces that we look at specific to the environmental site is the time it takes to get to the site as well as we look at the busing costs of getting out to the site, so I do know that that is still a piece that factors into a decision, you know, so we've had some conversations about, you know, are there some things that we can be looking at to help, you know, make sure that that is, is something that isn't the sole determining factor as to whether or not a classroom chooses to go out, because we are finding specifically at the elementary level, I will say, an increase in interest, you know, by our elementary staff as it relates to the work we're doing with our K-5 science curriculum and the opportunity to go out to the site, especially in the primary areas, we're seeing that. So, you know, Seth, you know, again, is here, you know, we had the opportunity to send Seth to some professional development last week, that he was pretty, came back pretty excited with a lot of information specific to instruction out at the site, so if there are specific questions, you know, I can, I can talk a little bit to the plan, but then also Seth, from his standpoint on the day-to-day instruction that happens out at the site.
Any questions? Dan?
Yeah, are you working at all with UW Stevens Point and their school forest, forestry program?
Yes, that's who runs a lot of the professional development I went to last week, was run by, you know, the Stevens Point.
Tricia?
I really got to get out there sometime. So, so bear with me when I ask this question, are the trails and the, I don't even know, if there's a trail up to the cabins, are those accessible? I saw that, so they're all the accessible cabin, but are their trails accessible?
Sure, so, we have a main road driveway that goes into the property and at the, at the head of that main road, which is accessible by buses, would not be right now because of how wet it is, you know, but, but we do make provisions, you know, for, for students to be able to get in. When it dries out or during winter, we are able to get a bus back in there. And then the main cabin, I would have to look and see how many years ago it was, but we redid all of the decking around that main cabin, so in addition to the stairway entrance, there's also a ramp to act, to make that accessible. The one that we're talking about as far as the camping cabins, there's a secondary site out at the site, you know, that there are some, some cabins that, you know, were built, I don't know, Jim, that was probably 10 years ago, 15 years ago? Yeah, yeah, and they're on a hillside, on a slope, so that was one of the ideas that came forth actually from a student a few years ago, but, you know, the site does have accessible areas so that we can, you know, have students who have mobility issues or challenges to get out to the sites, and then we also have a side-by-side, you know, utility vehicle that we're able to take on the trails, so have utilized that as well.
Dan?
So, the timeline for all of these is, are you saying that this is going to be done 19, 20?
So, the, the work that is scheduled out there is going to be an ongoing process. The curriculum mapping piece, that work is scheduled to take place during the 19, 20 school year, once we get in.
Thinking in 2020?
I'm 2020, sorry, yeah, yeah, 20, 19, 20, 20, yes, thank you, school year. As far as like the invasive piece, you know, that work, anybody who's worked with invasives, that's never going to be complete, it's going to be an ongoing piece, but this, this is work that is scheduled to start during the next school year. The planning for it took place this year with some, with most of these things in the planning meetings, and we're going to have to continue to evaluate that, I see, you know, continue to always have goals, maybe not necessarily board level goals unless you decide otherwise, but we'll always have goals out at the site as far as ongoing work.
I guess a follow-up on that, you know, at this point, the two goals that we had set for this year, I would say, this kind of culminates this year's activities in terms of what those goals were. Now we're going to have to move forward and as we start thinking about next year, you know, in the next really six to eight weeks, we'll be developing the goals along with the approval of the strategic plan, and at that point, I think the board's going to have to provide more direction in terms of what our next steps would be.
That's great, thank you. Go on. Jim?
Couple things, I was out there that two, I have to walk with my dog, and you should probably send somebody out there to get rid of some of those Leopold benches that are no longer safe, I mean, they're literally falling apart in pure nature. The other thing is when you're working with a forester on the forest management plan, I, something maybe to take up would be the potential harvest of maple sap out there. You know, the first part, there's a lot of maple trees that never got tapped for the students, and that could be a good revenue loser for the environmental site, you know, harvesting that sap and selling it to a processor. So if you're working with a forester, it might be a good place to start and then get some, you know, or extension and just see if it's feasible and maybe can make some money in it.
Yeah, we, we've had some of those initial conversations, per, per preliminary at this time, as far as, you know, what a recommended course of action might be as far as the sap piece, yeah, those benches that you, you mentioned, I know that's one of the, one of the things that we identified with the high school tech ed students as far as doing some replacement of them, but yeah, before, because things are going to get busy out there here pretty quickly, so Seth, I think you had had some, Seth had had some conversation with Kevin Tomaszewski about getting some things cleaned up and that's an easy thing to get added onto our list.
Chris? Yeah, I just had a quick question, and I know you said that you were trying to take into account the reservations that are coming into the site, but does it concern you all that there's a significant drop in some of the numbers of students that are out there? I guess it would be 300, which would be what, about 15%? And then hours of site occupation is down by like 33%, just roughly, and does that, does that mean that the, the students are under utilizing the site or is that just that they're going to be coming later and that maybe these numbers don't adequately show what's going to be happening? And maybe this has been due to the weather we've had as well, but that could put a lot of stress if you've got 30% reduction in hours of site occupation, that means all those students are going into a much more consolidated time grid? Does that work well for the staff they have out there?
But, for the dates that I'm out there, I'm out there to help groups on Fridays because I'm Monday through Thursday and in the classroom teaching, so I know for pretty much the rest of the year, when I'm out there on Fridays, a group will be out there, and for May, there's about every week, there's about two or three classes out there for the rest of the year that I know that I've signed up.
And to speak a little bit more to that, Chris, you know, I do think that the weather may have had an impact on some of our initial visits to the site this spring. It's one of the reasons why we want to take a look at more than just two years' worth of use, usage data. This is not data that we had collected prior to last school year as far as going back and taking a look at it. You know, we established an initial goal of what we were looking at as far as site use, and the first year, we found out that we were quite a bit in excess of what the current goal is set at, so what we're trying to decide is, or flush out is what a reasonable goal as far as site usage would be.
So it would be good to know because we'll go along to Dave's concerns he had earlier about what we're doing with the site and to make sure, I think he would think of the investment that we want to get those numbers going up so they could utilize this incredibly important source.
Dave?
I guess one comment on the maple sap part of it, I think if we were to look into that, I would look at a commercial vendor or somebody doing actual work, just because it's pretty intense when sap season's going and you have that much staff or students on the tour, I don't think you could do that, but if you had a commercial vendor, then the students could participate in that and see it in action.
To speak to that too, you definitely want to have a commercial vendor that's got a site plan, someone who's done maybe you'll leave all the tubing and all that stuff out there year-round and that type of stuff, and then liability also is a big deal with that too. Just points.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing that, thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Okay, next, I'm Leah, can I speak to this quite better than anybody, but like we put in board docs, 25% of the school districts get audited on the membership count and it just so happened to be, it was our turn. Leah, could you share a little bit, please?
Sure, as we had put in board docs, we had a really good audit, our third Friday and second Friday membership counts, they found no exceptions, so we didn't have any changes to make to those counts, so for our district, our side, that's our size, that's really good. We did have an exception with our summer school. This year, for the first time, we used the Skybird system, the student system, to calculate the attendance and it was found that there was a glitch and it was undercounting the students if they had an excused absence, and so it was kind of timely that we had the audit in the same year that we used the system for the first time, in the past, we've always manually done it. So we recounted, did it manually, and there was an increase of 14 FTEs for the summer school portion, so. So we were able to amend the report and submit that. And so we'll have some additional revenue there because of that.
Any questions for board members? Dan?
So then are you going to be able to make sure Skyward works correctly next year? Have you figured out why it did that?
Yeah, I think between the pupil services team and IT department, they have that worked out. They had spoken with Skyward and I think now they have all the books worked out.
I'm just curious, is this, so it says 25% of the districts. So is it randomly chosen or is it every four years you'll get audited? Is there any random reason to that?
If you are late submitting any of your reports, you're automatically selected for an audit in the year in which you were late. Other than that, it's random.
And how much time does the audit take? I mean, is it pretty time consuming or not too bad?
Do you have an idea, Tony, how long do we hear?
They came one day and... I think they're here for two days. Okay. Yes. And while they're there, it's for our clerical up here who does the final report. It's labor intensive, proper.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Leah. Okay, policy 332, school day first reading.
So we have several policies that we're going to discuss tonight. This first one came through a recommendation through Brian. So Brian, if you could go ahead and describe this a little bit, please.
So with some of the discussions that we've been having throughout the course of the year related to lost time due to weather cancellations, a question came up, would we be able to utilize some form of online or e-learning to make up some of those days? In addition, as part of the discussion during our membership audit, some questions came up related to reviewing current policy specific to a definition for school day. And what we were able to identify is we had an administrative rule, but not a policy, that talked about school day. It listed every building individually, its start and its end time. And through a process of review of other districts and how they were handling it, as well as recommendations from WASB, it was, you know, something that could be addressed through policy 322. And by doing that, what we elected to do was draft a policy that rather than listing each building individually that has a start and end time, and then if we have to make an adjustment to start and end time, come back and have to update the policy, stipulate a number of minimum number of minutes for each level. You know, the ongoing discussion related to the added minutes that we've added. We received positive feedback on that, so taking that into consideration, you know, we drafted this policy for your review that acts within the parameters of making sure that we either meet or exceed the minimum number of hours of instructional time needed at each of the levels, but then also providing some flexibility for the fact that our elementaries, most of them have a different start and end time throughout the day based on busing schedules so that anytime that we would have to make an adjustment, we don't have to, you know, go through a labor intensive process related to that. One of the other caveats with this policy is if we are to entertain down the road, you know, utilizing online or e-learning as a makeup possibility for weather cancellations, we are advised to further define what direct pupil instruction means and how that could be delivered. So there is wording in our policy that states that direct pupil instruction may be delivered in face-to-face virtual, online, face-to-face virtual formats, which is in alignment with how we do our virtual learning right now. And it defines direct pupil instruction as instruction that's happening on days that are scheduled as established or set through our school calendar. So that's a pretty quick overview of what's included in the policy, as well as a little bit of background as to the why.
Any questions or suggestions for modifications?
Dan?
So our, I read that line on the direct instruction may be delivered by face-to-face virtual, online, or blended face-to-face virtual formats. And so is it permissible for us to do that? And, you know, because I thought in our discussion before that you said it wasn't.
So what the guidance from the Department of Public Instruction is at this point is if you are going to use any of those formats, you have to define it in policy at some point in time that those are accepted ways to deliver direct instruction. And then there's a whole nother host of recommended activities that you want to do before you actually formally adopt an online way to come for makeup. That would be separate from our virtual, virtual school that we currently operate. That is well defined and there's a process for counting that. This would be specific to weather makeups, but if we don't define in policy that that's an acceptable format for delivering instruction, then we would have to come back later on and do that. So it's being recommended to include it here.
So you're saying that possibly we could work towards that?
Yep, yep. This would be a first step in that process. This by no means says that now all of a sudden if we have a snow day next week, which, you know, hopefully we won't, that we would be able to use it that way. But this would be the first step in allowing us to explore that and be ready for that type of scenario.
Great, great. Thank you.
Jim?
I have a question about the last paragraph.
Okay.
And you're listing the various hours that different buildings and administrative service centers open. I know in the past that there's been summer hours and we haven't had, you know, this has been closed on Fridays. I have a single provision for that in here. Does that need to be added? Because the way it's written, you shouldn't do that.
Well, I think, I think Karen's talking about the school year, but it would be a bad idea to further define that.
Yep. Yeah. You know, the first sentence in there on school day is, is in there, but I don't think you could define that.
You would, you would just have to add it to the last sentence where it says except holidays or whatever, something.
Yep. Any suggestions?
Dan?
Yeah, I read that and I'm wondering, parents may contact, you know, elementary schools. And I'm wondering, you know, if there was a specific reason that you were intending or can they contact elementary schools for any reason regarding the children's instruction or whatever questions they have? You know, does that, does that only mean that's...
So it's almost making it too narrow, you know, parents may contact, maybe just say something more of the office field with their business.
Okay.
Did the recommendation specifically mention parent contact?
No. So the, this paragraph actually came out of our existing rule that had the hours, the specific hours of operation on, so that was a pull from there.
Probably missing contacts and...
Yeah, and, and, yeah, and you're right, not only parents, but community, anybody, just do that.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you again, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, next, D, policy 371, district sponsors, student activity and organization first reading.
So we've had several requests over the last year, few years about adding different activities and clubs and such for students. And what we're finding now is that we're receiving more requests for elementary aged activities. And Mr. Hunt, the activity instructor at the high school, has done a really good job. We had talked about this issue earlier in the school year. And he has a very defined protocol now, so it's clear for interested people how to go about establishing that. However, at the elementary or middle levels, but especially the elementary level, it's not as clear. So I'm recommending that the board modify the policy to include the building principals at the middle and elementary levels so that people are understanding how to go about that process.
Any questions? Board members? Okay, then I guess I'll bring it back. Okay, and then next is policy 374.
This relates to the request that the board just approved tonight about a middle school student going to a national competition in California. And in looking at that, it's something that we're definitely excited for that student. At the same time, it brings up the question, you know, at what level do we feel comfortable sending students across the country? What are the expectations for staff in terms of these clubs and activities? And in talking with some of the other members of the lead team, while we do fully support the idea of the children traveling and doing this, we think that at that level, at that age level, it's most appropriate when the parent and or guardian is involved in the process. So while we support the idea, we would recommend that at the middle school, elementary levels, national travel to competitions would only be considered when there's a company in, from a parent or guardian. And also to make it clear that the district or student activity count would not be providing the funding for those types of activities. We just want to be consistent.
David?
So when our old star was in fifth grade, she went on the trip to DC. And that's, you know, we put her on the plane and they had somebody meet her in DC and she was at school event and we didn't accompany her to go out there with that. She was slightly too fast. So this way we eliminate that.
What kind of event was it, David?
I wish I could remember. Mr. Keese nominated her and then she flew out. And I know in fact Andrew Stangberry, I think, well, there was another kid that was born the year before. So that was as well.
So like an awards thing or a competition?
No, there wasn't any awards thing. They just went out there and it was, they can pick students out of school that would be, you know, good leadership type things and had them come out to DC for... I wish I could remember and they had to go. It's 15 years ago at least. Do you understand they don't do that anymore?
It's always like a workshop type thing or training?
I wish I could remember.
So you sent your fifth grade daughter on a plane by herself to DC?
Flight attendants came out, they got her, took her on the plane, put her up front and took her under the wing before they loaded anybody else, gave her cramp loads and all the works.
Waiter was that, David?
Well, she's 23 right now. I'm guessing, probably 12, 13.
Two doctor?
She's working with it. Doesn't have to take.
Dan? So at the middle school level, do we have any, any teams like the Olympiad teams and the Science Olympiad or any of those teams that would maybe qualify to go to a national competition?
It is possible, yes. Whether it be FCC LA or Science Olympiad.
But we wouldn't, we wouldn't help them go out?
Not under this policy, no. And right now, there's been no, no fundraising. Even, I think it was a year ago, the Science Olympiad team, you know, there was some discussion about whether or not they'd be able to qualify. And that's part of the issue, you know, when you look at the high school, there's more access to funds through a variety of programming and budgetary ways to do that. A lot of times those funds don't qualify to be used at the middle school or elementary level.
Jim?
Oh, so I'm just wondering about the word national. What if there's something in the state, like a competition that you're going to get permission to? I mean, would we, do we already have guidelines for that or would this apply to that? And how would that factor in?
So you mean like a school was hosting a national science...
Yeah, they had to travel to Green Bay for something or whatever. I don't know. Like that FIA thing that the pack are sponsoring, they got the gold for something. I mean, how would that, would this then apply or would we, is there already a policy or something? I was just kind of curious. Because national would apply outside of Wisconsin, but it would seem like they could do something in Wisconsin.
Well, I think in this context, it's a level of competition is what it's meant to imply. You know, where you have the district and then the state level and then, you know, some activities have a national level.
Christian?
Just thinking of all that Dave said, I wonder if it's possible to put in under letter I something in regards to like without prior approval from superintendent? Just in specific situations because I could see that coming up again. I mean, fifth grade, sixth grade, something. Kids are involved in so many different activities in all ages that they hate to be completely extraordinary.
So make it, you know, maybe qualify it, you know, generally...
Like you want to get specific, special approval from, if you're going to be flying by yourself or, you know, whatever.
Dan?
Well, that depends on whether it's a school-related function, you know, it's Boy Scouts or some other outside entity, then we would have nothing to do with it.
Right, this would not apply to that.
But I think it troubles me that maybe some of our middle school teams might, you know, might not have an opportunity to advance to a higher level if they get the opportunity, if they're that good. I really hate to slam the door on their achievement, their possible achievement.
And I think that's the question, you know, does the board want to be promoting or sponsoring national competition at that age level? You know, and where do we cut it off? Is it, you know, is anybody in the district? Do we cut it off? Right now, I think really only a high school that's competing at that level. And I think that's where we're asking for some direction.
Chris?
I think I'm following the discussion. And from what you say, the national is modifying the wrong word. So it's not national travel, the way you're suggesting is national competition. So the national is being a little more... And then is it really necessary that we have the last statement? I mean, if that's the thing that we're saying to be a quick sticking point later down the road, why does that matter at all?
About no district or student activity account funding will be provided?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important that the board take a stance. You know, so let's just say that, you know, the science, middle school science Olympiad team qualifies and all of a sudden they want to take, you know, 20 kids to DC or California or wherever. And, you know, there's been nothing budgeted, nothing, no fundraiser, nothing fundraised. That's going to create one heck of a challenge for a lot of people.
Well, then the language should be, it may or may not be provided to give you the option. But the no just takes it off the table. And if that's what the board members are referring to as a problem, then just change the language to be the case, Christian, to make good decisions.
We could do that, but if we're looking at equity and consistency, that's, you know, you may, you may end up seeing a word of one group has a yes and one group has a no. You know, and there's no description for how different groups should be treated.
Penny?
I guess I look at it as, you know, we have, our students have opportunities even on the high school level where the funding is not provided. For example, the upcoming Vampiric Cruz that's coming up next year, they have the opportunity to go out and fundraise to participate in it. But at this point, to my knowledge, the district isn't giving them any dollars. So why should it be any different for the middle school students? I don't want to see them not able to participate because my understanding in some of these different competitions is that the district, for example, in the case of the seventh grade student, the district has to sign off and give permission. So I don't want to say, no, you can't go. But I also don't think that we should be committing because if we do have an individual student or an individual group, again, equitable. So, and that's kind of what you guys were just touching on.
Well, the other thing, if some of these, you know, if we're talking about a whole team, that's, that can be a question. But some of these activities, I really think that if you participate at the state level and then you're willing to pay, you can qualify for the national competition as an individual. So what's the expectation for our staff, you know, our advisors? Are they expected to take a student to California and do that in the middle of the summer vacation?
Can you just run through one of the scenarios? Say a middle school science Olympiade qualifies for nationals. So as a policy is amended here with that letter I, how would that affect that?
At that point, they'd be congratulated for winning the state. And if individual parents wanted to take children to the national competition, they could do that with the school district's blessing. could do that with the school district blessing. But there would not be fundraising and there would not be an advisor assigned to do that at the middle school or elementary level.
I could see doing it maybe at the elementary level, but in the middle school, I don't know. My daughters were part of two teams that went to nationals and science Olympiade. So that's something that was pretty cool for them. They did a lot of fundraising for it, it wasn't included. I think, I thought it was paid partially by the district and partially?
At the high school level?
Middle school. Again, my daughters are middle schoolers, so a lot of them predate, there was some principals here.
And if the board, if that's what the board would like, that's, I'm not, I'm not against the idea. I just, I think it's important that we have some direction because right now there really isn't. And at what level does it get cut off? Do any of the principals have anything to add to this?
Well, one of the things I know what?
Part, why don't you come up?
City's director, a lot of the coaches and advisors talked about the fact that they do like that, you know, continuing to look for something more challenging. I mean, in our society today, it seems like we're trying to do more and more younger, younger age. And kids get to middle, high school, they're burned out, worn out, don't want to participate in things anymore. So I certainly wouldn't want that to happen. The science Olympiad thing, that's something that I know we continue to be a very good science Olympiad team, but with charter schools and things, it's very difficult to maybe get that first place slot to move on to nationals, even though we're right at the top. But, yeah, I, well, I think you all know me and all for opportunities for kids. But we want, I think it is important to know the rules and so is equitable for everybody to have a chance, you know, what's, what's going to be available for them too. I mean, it helps us and it is critical.
Would you help quantify what things at the middle school level, students could go to nationals for? Is there things, other than science Olympiad? I do know that my son was on a quizable team, they could have gone to state, not national. What else is there from a middle school level that they, obviously we see one here come through tonight, but?
FCC LA? Are there any other ones that come here, my Mr. Batcher?
The only ones I go on science Olympiad.
There are man things that go national at middle school level? That's what you know?
I don't know. Do they go to national or state? I don't know if state. I don't know if it's state.
I agree with Mr. Batcher that, you know, if a middle school team does qualify to go to the national competition, that's really something special. And I don't know if we want to stand in the way because that's, that's a major achievement.
So how would, how would you want that funded? Because a couple of years ago, I know when the science Olympiade team was really winning a lot, I know that was one question because there hadn't been any fundraising or anything done.
Well, I would, that's a tough question, but I think that if it looks like the team has that potential, they can start planning if they know that they have the opportunity and they have the potential, then they can start planning for it early this month. They shouldn't wait till the last minute. I think that, that if the coaches should be aware of that and plan for it. If they don't, then, you know, that's on them.
So it'd be funded through the student activity account is what I'm hearing?
Well, it'd be, I am not, not well enough to play with how those things work, you know, there's, I am.
That, that would be the fundraising, the fund sixty.
Yeah, so I can't speak to that. So you know more about that than I do. I would hope that there is a possibility, if they, they look like they're going to be, they have an opportunity and they don't plan for that possibility, then, you know, that's, that's on them. If they have a possibility and they plan for it and they have that opportunity, I don't think we should slam the door in the face.
Chris, did you have?
I was just going to add to Dave, I think spelling is the national competition and then, yeah, does that go national?
I don't think so. Geography being like another word that could be an action.
David?
I guess I agree with Joel that we need some policy and direction on this issue. What do we think about looking at what we did years ago, the science Olympiade team went to nationals, how that was handled? Then even back then, it was a source of angst by some, how funding was handled, but still, it got done and it's taken care of. The other thing, just maybe look at other districts, if there's any other activities, school sponsored activities, the middle school, you know, maybe some of your bigger counterparts and how they handle that at the middle school level.
Okay.
Maybe get a little bit broader, I think, just how to handle it. But I do think that we need to have something, policy on how to handle it. I, I don't like the idea of a team all of a sudden, because you never know if you're going to make the nationals around the science Olympiade specifically, just the way that things fall back. So a team might be doing lower all season and have a really good day and also they're going to nationals and now. I guess I'd like to see something in place that we give us some guidance and our staff.
Chris, did you have something to say?
This is just the first read, right? A lot of details are coming up to the discussion. I'm not sure how long you spent on some of these details, but some of the things that have been brought up about how we're specifically going to fund these things and contingency plans, which may or may not happen in the future. And we came up from the middle school teachers, said you can think of one possible national outcome that would be in play, but doesn't happen very often. And so there's a lot of stuff on the agenda. And as a first read through, we've given some critical feedback on the language that's used, how the national fits into this program. And then thinking about that problematic of slamming the door shut, put us revisit it the next time, after we get some more information, we can move on, it'd be good.
Part, do you have something else you want to add?
I do think it's important for an advisor or coach to know what the expectation is too, because a lot of these hours, summertime like this, the fourth, FCC LA goes over the Fourth of July, is that advisor expected to go, you know, on this trip if a, if a student makes a sum? And may inhibit some of our coaching and advising too, they may, some of our staff might not be so inclined, or a parent would be more inclined to take their child to, to do this. And I don't, just some more things I think.
I would agree at the middle school level especially, that the advisor isn't necessarily, you know, committed to go to that. Especially I don't, from the FPA side, we go to things or not things on the national level with our kids, just downfall, which is deep sometimes, you know, and that scheduling and things like that. So I, I would see it with the advisor at the middle school level as managed.
Sometimes those middle schoolers just don't have the maturity of those high school coaches. Sometimes, it is sometimes.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll continue to research it and modify it a little bit and bring it back for more board discussion.
Just a follow-up, one other quick idea out there, possibility that we weren't using district numbers to like having grants or the thing? It's set, well, you know, we don't like, it says they want thirty thousand dollars, but, you know, you could get a certain number of their thousand dollars to help seed money or something like that.
National competition grant?
Yeah, or something like that, just throw that out there too, as for further consideration and stuff.
The only thing I would have to say is Penny's right, I think we do have a policy that says that when, that we pay for an advisor to go with them, but we don't pay for the students to, to them to come up with the money and fundraise, isn't it correct?
It depends on the type of activity. Yeah, every activity is classified differently based on how it aligns with DPI, curriculum, WIE, et cetera.
Okay. All right, then I guess we'll do some research and move back.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last discussion idea before we talk about the school schedules before we retreat is to discuss update to the 2019 calendar.
So the board approved the calendar for next school year back in December. As we started inputting the calendar, a clerical error was found based on how the calendar shifts from this year to next year. And the calendar that has been drafted is missing one day. So one day for students, one day for staff. So when looking at how to modify that, really we came up with three options. One is just add the date to the end of the year, but if we do that, we're bringing staff back the second week of June. There is room there Friday, June 5th for students in 2020, but then staff would have to come back Monday, June 8th. We do have the ability to leave the calendar one day short and add a workday for staff. You know, as we saw this year, the number of hours of instruction that we have is sufficient. However, doing that, you know, we're rolling the dice a little bit because if we have a difficult winter, we would already be putting ourselves up against that threshold closer than we already are. And then the third option is to add minutes to the student day at the beginning of the year and add a workday for staff, either scheduled or floating. So when we look at this, we do think it's important to add additional instruction. Obviously student instructions, like we're all here. And we have had a very positive response from many people, parents, staff, and in some cases, some cases, students about the extended days that we've had. Now, we wouldn't have to extend them as far as we've, we've had to this spring, but I guess that's, that's the recommendation that we're at right now, would be to increase the school day a little bit, not bring the students back on Friday, June 5th. And then it would also provide us with some auxiliary benefits. We've heard through the QIC groups from our teachers that they really wish they had more planning time. And we do have a bunch of professional development built into the teacher calendar, but that's, that's real high intense professional development or the one day of self-directed professional development that has some pretty clearly defined expectations. Now with making up these school, these snow days this year, several of our staff members have decided to make up that through planning time. And we've heard positive response on that as well for a lot of the different activities that our staff members do. So it wouldn't be at the same threshold as self-directed professional development, but it would be recognizing some of the other activities that our staff does. So that would be for teaching staff. With the hourly staff, you know, especially being on an hourly basis, it makes it a little more difficult to put in additional hours in the forty hour work week. But with the hourly QIC groups, we've heard over the years that they wish that they were able to attend more of the professional development activities. In fact, the last couple of years, we've actually offered the hourly group some flexibility where they could choose, you know, between one or two days where they felt it would be the most valuable in their professional development. So by doing this, we could actually have all of the hourly employees be able to attend an extra professional development day. So again, you know, there are different options. When I look at it, I think the third option of adding minutes to the student day, starting right at the beginning of the year, it would, you know, make up for that instruction and it also provides some benefit for both our teaching and hourly staff. Any thoughts or questions or discussion?
My only question is, if we do end up with a situation like we have this year, we're already adding minutes to the day and we have to start adding more minutes and more minutes, like how long is our day going to be or is that going to be workable?
It would limit our ability to make up as many days like we did this year. So if we have another winter where there'd be eleven snow days, I think it could be a little more difficult. However, when we look at like a ten minute increment, that would more than cover the one day and actually we'd be building in additional hours. So I think it actually put us in a better spot. We just want to have that end of the year flexibility. But we still would have June 5th where we could bring students back on that Friday. We still don't like that for having to bring the staff back like we are having to do this year, but it still provides us more flexibility and it wouldn't hurt as bad, you know, in the event that a professional development day has to be modified.
Specifically, how many minutes are we talking about in option three?
Uh, right now, we're running the number for ten minutes, Clint.
Chris? So it's ten minutes per day and that's divided up between classes and that's different depending on which school level they're in. I'm just concerned that, one thing that came out of that meeting in Duran is that they really wanted to make sure that we're making statistics based decisions and what's best for our students.
Yep.
And one thing that I'm a little uneasy about, number three, is that it's based on some feedback that may or may not have not come from all the teachers who maybe have different psychological issues in terms of what they face. It may have come back from some parents, but of course, not a whole bunch of them. And it seems like this is like one of those times where there's been an accident that's been made and then it's trying to make the best of a bad situation rather than thinking about what the real effects must be, great plan to think about, what the effects are for how we think about adding a couple of minutes, you know, per class versus losing a whole day. So from my perspective, like I would never as a teacher want to lose a day of instruction. Adding a couple of minutes just doesn't really add that much value, but it may be just the level of instruction I'm in that. But I've heard from lots of other teachers that they don't find a lot of value in adding one or two minutes per class and that doesn't really help them achieve the same learning outcomes for the students. And so just thinking about how we make our decisions, I would say that would be the first thing to consider. What does this do to our kids in the classroom, really getting the same, you know, thinking of equitability, like equitable, you know, transgressions, are they really giving the same learning outcome? So would you be able to get some more statistics in terms of how we think about how this affects student learning in the classroom? Really a couple of minutes, is that really adding the same type of learning experience to the students that they normally get? And then could be better incorporate feedback from all our teachers rather than just some general comments that we get from some listening sessions?
Well, like I wrote in your background, Chris, I do plan to meet with the QIC groups and discuss this issue.
Gotcha. I was just noticing that there's a couple of things that maybe we're putting the reasoning, what we're talking about logic before. Like the logic we're thinking about is like, we really want to think about what the learning outcomes look like for the kids. So put in that one first and then maybe thinking about how we collect feedback from all our educators to figure out how this really affects their classrooms, that they really do believe they're giving the students the same type of learning outcomes would be interesting.
I think you would find a lot of teachers that say once Memorial Day hits, students are already on vacation. So they would rather build in that time now and get it done earlier than at the end of the year because they're thinking vacation. I've heard that from numerous teachers that say that. So the instruction for the kids and learning identity here isn't as great, so.
We totally agree with that, but it'd be nice to get the feedback from the educators and stuff and just what we do.
Okay, well, the QIC is going to be contacted, it's going to probably have a special name to that, correct?
Yep.
And so we will be talking to the teacher reps and finding what they say too, so.
But we can definitely have the students come Friday, June 5th and have the staff come back Monday, June 8th. We can do that. I just, I, I'll be surprised if that's the direction that a majority of people would want to go.
The only thing I caution against doing that is that you're, if you do that, then you give up any snow makeup days also. And we might be taking that Friday anyway, depending on the weather, but if we do that, then we're all, we're all. then we're all, we're all on back and going into the second of the June, giving the students.
Okay, is there any discussion?
So we will do some more research on this and we'll be bringing it back. I would suggest that we try to take some sort of action on this in May. It'd be nice to have the calendar fixed before the end of this school year.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so we changed the agenda, so now we're going to schedule the school board retreat. So I guess everybody needs to get their calendars up. It's okay to burn our cell phones up. Yes, you can do that. You've got your calendar, you bet.
So now, hold.
So I gave the board five, actually six dates that the facilitator from WASB is available. All of them are in May. Jamie put a link in there for you to list the dates that you're available. So if board members have done that, we should be able to see when people are available.
Do you want us to do that right now?
So do you, do you all want some time to do this and we can let you know what date works best for everyone or do you want to all try to complete this right now?
Let's do it now.
I'm doing it right now.
Great.
What time does it start in?
6:00 PM.
Why is it telling you need permission?
You didn't still leave?
Is it because you have your own?
No.
Yeah, I'm using the link right in the. I can voice tell you what works for me.
Here's others that's free stuff.
Yeah, I can do anything related on the 23rd and 30th. Because that 23rd is, I was Mr. Wright, for the graders, it was not done and then it's our entire teacher trip. Otherwise, it's free.
Is it coming through, Jamie, or is it just going through?
It is, but it's just a big one.
Do you want to just ask each date? Do people raise their hands if they're ready?
May 6th? Jim's not here.
She can read.
May 6th, Jim or no?
May 8th?
No, I don't know that.
May 16th?
No.
Who don't you have, Jamie, in there?
Tricia and Heather.
May 22nd?
I have everybody except for Clint.
What year is that?
Wednesday, May 27th.
I could adjust it if that's on the full.
Okay, 23rd adjusted.
False early.
And so is 30.
23rd, I have someone that can't.
Some people.
30.
I got it.
So 27th.
Don't play a DJ.
Is that that?
Yeah.
22nd, you said you could.
I hear you.
And Jim said it was okay.
Jim, we're.
Yes, Jim has that done.
Okay, so 22nd.
Wonderful.
36?
Yes.
Okay, and thank you for doing that. Also, it says, please communicate. And we can do that right now if you'd like, which topics you would like covered at the retreat.
Al Brown from WASB.
I was at a workshop, kind of a class meeting convention, which is something that we should be doing. We've got a good program for that, so that would be good.
Board member ethical standards, I think also board member communication. Chris?
I would like to come up with a metric by which we could gauge effectiveness of the school board, like how many policies we pass, how we think about what those address, how we spend our time. Because we have a lot of assessments for reading other people, but we don't have a really good method of assessment. And I tried to get information on the number of policies we passed in the last year, but it wasn't really available. So maybe having a way which we could jump to self-assessment would be a great thing to think about.
What do you mean it wasn't really available?
Well, I got them and I found the minutes, but it would be nice if we could have like a place where we could have like policies passed and we could look up what those policies address. Because there were some guidelines that we got in our meetings and that Dan brought up at the last school board meeting. For some general percentages, we want to think about what we're focusing on and what type of policies we're making. And that way we could find some alignment with what Brian's bringing forward about what our goals are for each year. And I think, isn't this next year, 2019, 2020, we're focusing on arts integration? And we might be, it may be a great opportunity for us to think about the types of policies that we do to make sure that we're moving forward with some agendas that we're advancing on the areas. So is it really just a mechanism by which we can understand board effectiveness in terms of what we spend our time on, the type of policies that we pass?
If you want to see what policies the board worked on last couple of years, if you go to the work plan, they're all listed. I can show it to you after the meeting.
I'm trying to get to the board docs and I'd like to find the minutes.
It's in the goals, it's in the goal of what we did this year, this past year. So, so Jim will show you.
But I agree, I like the idea of the effectiveness. But I just, that's my question about policy, I can show it to you.
I appreciate that.
I don't, I don't need to belabor, but is there like a dashboard or something like that you look at that just summarizes everything in one spot?
The work plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it lists all the policies in the board review.
Any other ideas? David?
Are we going to have the board evaluation? They typically do that before a retreat. Is that something we could get?
Can you remember something that would be a good idea?
You know, the board already completed it for this year, but that was, that was the past board. I wouldn't think it'd be worthwhile to go through the results. So you're wondering if we could redo it before the retreat? I think we have enough material for three retreats, by the way.
Do it, do it. So you're talking about three, that we get by three, right?
Yes, yes. It says, our assessment of the other.
This is, this is good, this is a lot of material. Anything else? And perhaps some of this, you know, when we, and Amy and I will talk with Al, perhaps some of this he'll help us prioritize and, you know, some things may be better to do first, but I think this will probably also lead to the idea that we'll need to schedule another retreat. Because this is not all, maybe not one night, I can tell you that already.
Okay, and then I would suggest that if anyone has any of your ideas, I mean, that's a pot, but if you have any ideas or you're specific on something that you've brought up, I could say, just let me or Jim know.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to go into the policies. And I, I'm trying to understand, Dan, when you asked for the board retreat, did you want those policies to wait to be discussed during the retreat or you want them to be discussed this evening?
Well, I think as we go to each item agenda, then we could decide whether we want to postpone that discussion until after the end of our June meeting or not.
Okay. All right, so then moving on to G, public participation at board meeting, second reading.
So as I put in the board docs, this is already discussed in the first reading during the March meeting, but we don't typically adopt policies during the second meeting of the month. And we received some additional input from board members. So I did put it back on the agenda and in the draft, you can see that when we look at policies, the new language is in bold, outdated language is struck through. In this case, because it's the second reading, I used some red font to help point out the additional feedback that was provided by board members. Are there any other suggestions for this policy before we put it on the May agenda?
Jim?
I just have one, one question. It says, all matters will refer to the district administrator for study. My only question would be, is if something came up that directly concerned the district administrator, should we have an option there for someone else to take care of?
Yeah, I preferred the previous language, the ordinarily such, but that was just one of the suggestions that a board member had last meeting.
Yeah, I was just, when I saw that all, I said, well, for some, for whatever reason, it may not be appropriate to have you to take care of the issue. And so I just wondered if we need some language in here that would make a little more flexibility. I don't know how to say it, but it was just my concern.
And there may be some items that come up that don't require any.
Correct.
So you're referring.
I like when you're discussing.
So go back to the original language of ordinarily such instead of all. Any other suggestions? Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll see. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
On the rule, 107 rule, it's just a grammatical thing.
Okay.
There's a paragraph, it's an ABC, but on C, it says to specify whether he or she is acting. So if three or more names, individuals, it should be named individuals.
Name, okay, got it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Dan?
I'm just throwing this out. Since public participation is not mandatory by state law, is there any, at any time, at any board meeting when the board would feel necessary to forego public comment time and participation at that, for that board meeting? Is that, I don't know, is that addressed here?
I would ask what the purpose of that would be. Can you give an example of who we would not want to do that?
If we had an extremely, extremely, you know, full board that's in a meeting that's going to take a lot of discussion time, wouldn't we even consider that or not? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
Well, they do have, the policy does says that, you know, you can have up to 10 people for three minutes and then after that, you can limit them to two minutes. And I have never seen us have more than 10 people. I don't think in my, maybe once or twice, maybe I was being sexually minded, but.
I would assume there's a policy for addressing it if it becomes disorderly or just, all right, just belligerent in there. If someone came in here and they were just insane, crazy, angry with someone here.
Now, the three-minute time, or do we have to sit and listen to it for three minutes?
Well, you said listen.
The only, the only thing we can, first of all, it's First Amendment rights, they
can say anything they want about any board member.
Right.
Okay. If they're angry and they yell and scream, that's okay. We can try to call order, but they, we could be up for a lawsuit or something in our rights. The other thing is, is if we can stop them, if they talk about personnel or specific students, specific personnel or specific student, then we can stop them because that violates the protocol or HIPAA laws. But there is a statement in it that says, you know, that we can tell them that, hey, forward, remember, this could be filmed, it could be in the newspaper, it could be defamation of character, you know, I mean, any one of us could, you know, talk about slander or whatever, you know, too, so if somebody came, so, but no, we can't shut them down. It'd be nice if we could, can't anymore.
I just, I don't want to give a hand and Amy, it'd be nice if we could, I mean, it's their right.
Yeah, is it?
I, I understood, just, I agree though, Dave, we shouldn't leave that hand, but they have the opportunity to do it. And you just clarified my concern with that.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, I, I think there is a limit when they cross the line over disorderly conduct that we need to understand at what point that occurs or with how we define that too because I don't think we want people to understand, you know, they have freedom of speech, but there are limits of freedom of speech and that is, they can't come in and certain things are going to be considered by law, disorder of conduct, and I don't know how we deal with that.
It's probably something we would have discussed.
It's the chairman's responsibility to maintain order and to discern when and when they can, whatever. That's pretty clear policy.
All right, any other discussion on that? Okay, public policy or policy 161, board member authority and responsibility?
So at the last meeting, several board members commented on the possibility of creating some sort of code of conduct for school board members. And upon that discussion, I did contact WASB and the response that I received back was that our school district already has policies that really cover what's expected of a board member. And what was sent back to me was our policy 161, board member authority and responsibility, and policy 165, board member ethical standards. So what I did is I put those on the agenda and really, you know, the board still could draft a separate policy. You know, you may have to consider being careful with repetition or even more problematic would be a policy that would conflict with existing policy. Perhaps the board would want to, you know, just review 161, 165 and offer any suggestions or, I guess I'm not sure where the board wants to go with this, but based on the last discussion, I did the research and that's where I found out.
Does anyone have any suggestions for 161 and 165? Heather?
I just heard those groups that brought it up last time because of the former president and I guess you're not the current president of having ethical standards that aren't being followed and what repercussions do you or does the president have when they are not following what the president should be doing as a leader? Who do we go to if we have issues or board members have recommendation or have issues if the president is part of that scheme or block or issue at hand? There's been social media attacks and I think this needs to be brought up, you know. To me, that is not a president, that is not a leader. A leader is the one that's supposed to function the board, run the board, and at the time we were not at that. So I think we need guidance. You know, you may have to consider being careful with repetition, or even more problematic would be a policy that would conflict with existing policy. Perhaps the board would want to, you know, just review 161, 165, and offer any suggestions or, I guess I'm not sure where the board wants to go with this, but based on the last discussion, I did the research and that's what I found out.
Does anyone have any suggestions for 161 and 165? Heather?
I just heard this group that brought it up last time because of the former president and, I guess you're not the current president, of having ethical standards that aren't being followed. And what repercussions do you or does the president have when they are not following what the president should be doing as a leader? Who do we go to if we have issues or board members have recommendation or have issues if the president is part of that scheme or plot or issue at hand? There's been social media attacks, and I think this needs to be brought up, you know. To me, that is not a president, that is not a leader. A leader is the one that's supposed to function the board, run the board, and at the time, we were not at that. So I think we need guidance, particularly the president in that matter of that role, and further guidance on these standards.
Okay. Anybody else? Chris.
I read through 161 and 165. They just aren't really robust. And they don't give, they give general guidelines in terms of the nature of our power. And they give some general guidelines in terms of some relationship issues between ourselves and administration and for our students. But I went out and did some research on some other well-functioning school boards, and they've got much more robust codes of ethics, like a separate section. They really get at some things about mutuality and compatibility and the ways which we advocate professional development for ourselves as well, not just for our staff. So I printed some of those up. I don't know if it'd be helpful to look some of those over. But we can't really ask the president to enforce rules or ethical guidelines if we don't have them. And so I can totally appreciate what they were, because that's what you're saying. But when you look at 161 and 165, there's just not a lot there in terms of holding people accountable towards approved ethical standards that we come. So maybe looking at some other school districts that do well in this regard would be a good idea for all of us to kind of educate ourselves, someone else is out there. Would that be useful or not?
Well, I would somewhat disagree because we had not worked in spirit harmony and cooperation in spirit of differences. I mean, I agree that it is, in a sense, generic. I do think it needs to be more specific, but there was a lot of policy that was broken. And I know you weren't on the board at the time, but there was not only in 165 and whatnot. But I did the same thing. I went and polled other board districts and what their wording was.
Did you find any that you thought?
Yes, yes.
Me, too.
Yeah. I think sharing that as well, but I do think there needs to be modification to that, to these policies. It needs to be more specific, yes.
I agree.
David.
I guess I would like to see those policies shared with the board. And maybe if you could summarize them or, they're really short. We'll give it to Joel, and then so the board can have a look at them and see what else is off the table.
I think that.
Heather?
I think this would be a good topic to share at the retreat, as far as other.
I think that's kind of a model of ready to be part of the retreat. Heather?
But I also know, at the last meeting, there was talk about what penalties do board members have if a policy is broken.
That's coming up in the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Anything else on 165 or 160, I'm sorry, 161 or 165?
Chris, would it be useful to hand them out and hard copy? I just, if we're just going to send them all to you and then you're going to resend them back through email, that might be okay, but sometimes it's good to have things to mark up. Since I already printed them out, would it be useful to just read that now? Or is that something that you just don't do?
Oh, you haven't printed for all the board?
Yeah. Oh, is that okay? I printed up Milwaukee and Wausau, who had really robust ones. Milwaukee especially, their verbiage is really nice. And it aligns with lots of things that we were talking about at that meeting in Duran. So that's useful. This is three pages. So just put this past around like we're in school again. Take the top three. Wausau, it's more like a little class. But this one is really well done, and it's a well-performing school board.
In the future, Chris, if you have information I could show the board, if you just get it even the night of the meeting, preferably earlier, I can easily load it into board docs, then board members can review it.
Okay, that's good information. I don't need that much.
Mine are different. Mine are marked out, and I do not have enough practice for everybody, so.
But either way.
Yeah, I can email it to you.
Yeah, either way, I'll take these and I'll upload them into board docs, and I'll take whatever is me or anybody else. If you have information, send it to me and I can upload it, because we also have a record of it then as well.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks for your time.
Joel, they might be saving money tonight, huh? Probably he knows it. Can't raise her hand.
I think it's fine.
I think so.
I always look to save some money. Okay, well, go over and pass those around. Can we keep moving? Is that all right? Okay, so, you know, a similar introduction then would be for the next one about the board member electronic communications. At the meeting, I know, Heather, you had shared a request about social media. And when I read that electronic communications policy, I interpret that as being covered of social media piece. Did you find anything in addition that we would want to change this policy? Or are we talking about a separate social media? Because WASB did not have anything specific separate for social media.
I also interpret social media on there, but I don't think everybody does as a board member. So I think it needs to be more specific.
Are there any points to that policy that you'd like to see changed? Or again, would you like to maybe wait for the retreat and we can?
I would like to wait for the retreat.
Okay.
Because apparently our, I feel our policies are a little too generic or broad that are not being followed, and I think it needs to be unfortunately more defined.
And just so I understand, there are multiple entities that work with school boards on policies, not only in Wisconsin but across the country. You may have seen NEOLA at some of the, you know, different school board conventions, whether it be national convention or the state convention. Many school districts in Wisconsin use WASB, and certainly different organizations are going to have different approaches based on the legal council they have. You know, then there's things like policy governance and coherence governance, and, you know, some of those school districts, the policy book is like this. You know, really, it just says the superintendent cannot do, and it just lists the things that are prohibited, and then everything else is, you know, for the superintendent to do. And I'm not suggesting we throw our policy manual by any means, but I think for anybody who doesn't understand school policy, that may be why you're seeing variances. And if you search the internet on any of these policies, you can find multiple examples. Some of them may be appropriate for Wisconsin, some of them might not be. But most of our policies have been drafted utilizing WASB as a resource. So that doesn't mean they can't be modified. In fact, they should be modified to fit our local expectations, and that's why we review them regularly. Okay, excuse me, I got a little bit pulled here. So then, any other questions on Policy 166, Board Member Electronic Communications? Do you mind if I keep rolling, Amy?
Okay.
Okay, so then, the potential penalties for board members if district policy is violated. This was also part of the last discussion, and I also received some additional communication from a board member. And, you know, I was asked even research, you know, just do any boards utilize a fines system or anything like that? According to Bob Butler at WASB, he's not aware of any school district in Wisconsin that institutes any kind of fines or anything like that. You know, if a board member does something that's criminal, where it be a violation of, you know, some law, then state statute does allow for the removal of a board member by a judge. Certainly, a recall situation could occur. That would be a second way that board members could be held accountable. And then, what's typically followed according to Bob is through parliamentary procedure, there is the potential of censure for a board member. And he gave me a link, you know, censure is a pretty common term. You know, so I think that would probably be what you'd see most typical in the event that a board member is breaking a local policy that does not rise to a criminal manner. And then if the board member is an officer, and I know there had been some previous discussion, WASB has modified their policy resource guide, and they do suggest that a board officer can be removed through the majority vote of the board. It does, it has been made very clear that it's not recommended that the board take that power lightly, but it is an option. So, you know, that's the research that I found. And that leads into the next policy about board officers. In the event that the board wants to have that clearly defined, Policy 141 would be our board officer policy. And the language that WASB has in their policy resource guide is what I listed in bold in terms of a board officer being removed. But certainly, that's a board issue. That's something the board would need to take on. But that's the research that I've done based on the board discussion.
David?
Does censure have to be on the agenda or do I have to?
Then I'm not positive, but I would agree. I think agenda, I mean, an official censure would need to be on the agenda, I would think. It's part of the parliamentary procedure. I will do some more research on that, though, Dave.
Any other questions, comments?
What would the board like me to do with Policy 141? Oh, I should point out, in addition to the accountability piece, in reviewing 141, with some of the recent work the board has done, in wanting to provide the president more direction, I did put in some suggested language under the duties of the president to facilitate with the board the evaluation of the district administrator.
Where is that?
In Policy 141, number five.
Okay. Thank you.
The bold would be the new language. So if the board, you know, this would be a first reading, if the board would like to make modification 141, the two potential modifications would be that facility, that piece about the evaluation, and then if the board would like to define the accountability piece, that would be that bottom paragraph. But again, that's going to have to be a board directive.
Jim?
We talked about kind of having like almost like a job description or listed duties for the board member for each officer. Can we kindly do that here? But I don't know if we could make an amendment or something, this where it says the duties opposed by law or action of the board. If we could, for each board officer, list each one of those. So at the beginning, that's your organization meeting, if you become whatever that officer is, you have those things spelled out more specifically. We kind of talked about that a couple of meetings ago. You know, like I found out that we all have, I mean, the list is pretty extensive, what the statute says, and I'm always speaking back in different ways, but it would be nice to have that and actually, you know, here, you're the clerk, here's your, you know, policy duties, and here's your duties. And just any of that thing.
Well, if it's duty for the entire board, that would go under the board member responsibilities policy.
Correct, but I'm looking down here, you know, you have duties for president, vice president, treasurer, and clerk. And that would just, if we could somehow have that spelled out more specifically, so when you, and it's almost like an organization thing, so when the person gets, you know, here, this is your clerk, here's your duties, and here's a lot of the parts of you, so you just have a better idea of what it is. We had, we had talked about that towards the meeting, and I was coming up with something kind of like what, so everybody has an idea of what they're doing, what their roles are.
Can you think of any things, Jim, that you'd like, that you'd like in there?
Well, I was just going to the whatever section of the statute that just tells you what, what to do. That was also one of those little things I learned at WASB, is that just like all these little things that add absolutely no clue that you're required to mean. And most of it's not through other actions, but it would still be nice to know those sorts of things. So that, and with part of what we're talking about, organization overall on the board, if you want, I could sit down and tie the statute and kind of send you the general idea.
Sure, and I'll look up the statute, too.
That might be helpful to give to the guys, but yeah, I could just kind of hand mine.
Okay, great, thank you.
David?
The other thing you could do is just put a link to the state statute that changes that job description. That's true, too, or something, but yeah.
There probably are legal references there at the bottom of the policy.
Yes.
But we could, yeah, we could review that as well.
Heather?
I don't know if it goes up, would be in this policy or another one, but I would like guidance on who a board member is supposed to go to when the board president is unethical.
So that would probably be a duty of the vice president, I'm assuming?
Well, at the time, the vice president was also not. So I, personal experience with information, what do you do when the leadership is not doing ethical matters?
You said, or?
I don't have that power as a board member.
But I think any board member could request an agenda item through the, oh, did I interrupt what you were going to say, Dan?
No, that's.
You know, an individual board member could request an agenda item through the policy for doing that.
I don't know, does it come through the voting board or is it?
But I have also found that my emails are not always read in a timely fashion or taken as upon, so.
I think this would be a good thing to bring up at the board retreat, um, probably any situations like that.
I just think there just needs to be something for the future, and what has happened in the past going forward if this ever does come up again, as far as guidance. But yes, we can discuss that for the retreat. If we didn't have it.
Dan?
Are you maybe suggesting that we have a subcommittee that basically, if there is a issue over the leadership, that would be that they would take that on and make a recommendation for the board?
No, I don't think I'm doing that. I just think, what is the precedence? What do we do when our leadership on the board isn't ethical or following through on email requests? What do we do then?
Well, that.
I mean, I don't know. Is that a committee thing? I mean.
I would, I don't know. Look, we should discuss that later.
I do, I do know that there has been situations where a board member, not, I'm not aware of any anomaly, where a board member has stepped down off the board to make a public comment. You know, a board member does have the ability to do that. So that could be what happened to it, for some reason you were thinking that, you know, your agenda was being blocked or something by leadership. That would be a possibility. I don't know if that's what you're getting at, though. Maybe wait for the retreat. So what about this policy, 141? Do you want any modifications to it?
Dan?
Something to consider. A majority vote to remove officers. WASB recommends caution to employ this for a very good reason, because this would cause a lot of disruption to the board. And disruption to the board basically makes the board dysfunctional, and research shows that dysfunctional boards basically, you know, kids in the end will do something.
For sure.
And so, maybe the board would want to consider, instead of the majority, would be the two-thirds vote for that, just to make sure that, that we're not, we're not getting in a situation where you're changing majorities, you know, ebb and flow, that we're not always looking to change leadership.
I would want to check that, and I can research that. The only, the only thing is, this is the interpretation of current state law. I don't know if we could create a policy that would, maybe we can, but I think whether or not the board has a policy, the law would probably, I don't know, I'd have to research that. So could a board modify it to two-thirds would be the question?
Anything else?
Chris?
When we had our legal council. One thing when we had our legal counsel come, he was very clear to caution that, I think the phrase he used was bully-nilly, but there's no caution put in here. It's, as a matter of fact, he just underlines, "at the pleasure," which makes it seem like a civil majority, like this is something we need to do if we want to. I think that there were very few examples of this ever having taken place, and even our legal counsel could not come up with the circumstances, which might have earlier just to know, but he put a lot of caution to any board member who thought that it was within your bounds to make a change in that leadership. So I would like to see that caution be put in here if you were going to put this into that policy. Maybe he even said it four times.
Would you have Barry Forbes, Bob Butler?
Bob Butler, yeah.
He's the one who I've been communicating with, this is their language.
Yeah.
David?
I guess, you know, if you go back when this came about, you know, there's some things that have happened in the district that put us, make us liable from a couple, you know, two, three, four different angles, and so that's where I see coming in. If we have a liability issue as a district because of something that a board officer does, and we take no action to correct that liability, what does that say about the board and our susceptibility to being sued if something happened down the road? So I guess that's why I'd like to see something like this be available or something. I think the fact that we do a censure, you know, I think that's something that could be used on the board if that came up again. So I know it's extreme that something like that would happen, in fact, this district did not happen. We did not replace leadership. But I think they just have mechanisms in place in case of liability this kind of district protect ourselves as a district.
My point was simply that I didn't write, I didn't write this paragraph, I didn't underline, "at the pleasure," just to say, I want to make that clear.
Okay, can I read one strategic planning update?
Okay, so you've all shared a letter from Studer along with draft of strategic plan. I will be speaking about this with the lead team tomorrow as well. Any questions, comments, suggestions that board members have?
Chris? Super sorry, I know I wasn't supposed to say much during this meeting and I was supposed to listen, but some of the things I picked up is that there's not always a clear alignment between our mission statement and then what's going on in the five pillars that they constructed here. And one thing I noticed, especially in the first one, where we're talking about educational pillars, career, college-ready, and life-ready graduates, there's no connection between the different columns and the measurable goals they're looking to get. Specifically, ELA performance and math performance, there's no mechanisms in there which kind of realize the outcome, the desired outcome, that those will be measurable improvements in terms of those particular learning outcomes. And so I wonder, or I question the credibility of the way that this report has been put together, and doesn't seem to do, there's alignment or connection between the mechanisms for change and the learning outcome. So that was what I found on pillar one. Pillar two was pretty good, but then when we got to pillar three, this is where we're talking about our talented workforce. One of the more important ones was shared decision-making with our teachers and the people that work in our district, but it wasn't very clear how they were going to get the teachers put into that shared participation in the decision-making process in terms of what was gone with the measurable goals. So just some things, usually we like to try to make like a theory of change and then a process of change, and here the theory and process kind of break down, and there's no clear understanding how these processes realize the next step and the goals that they lay out. Anybody else?
David?
I guess I'd ask Chris, would you like to see change for pillar one?
Well, I would guess I would ask Brian on what they had thought that should be part of the interim year ago as they get to the measurable goals, because these are columns that are stages in the way in which they want to implement these things. So one of the things I noticed is that the way they have oriented the language, especially in column three, was really work-oriented, whereas the measurable goals aren't necessarily work-oriented. I did some research to try and figure out if there are a lot of other schools that have students doing internships, and also, what was the other thing they were going to be doing? Co-ops. And the language here is that they were going to make sure that all students had that opportunity, which seemed like a really heavy-handed way of thinking about how we're approaching high school education and outcomes, whether it's supposed to make them work-ready or supposed to make them life-ready. But what happens is measurable goals, you got the things that we need to work on, especially with our testing outcomes, especially with our English language results, which aren't super great across the state. And there's no intermediate steps to get us to those realizable goals by which we can improve those English language outcomes on the end. They're mostly like work-related, they're rhetorical structures that want to make us think that it's creating, I guess, a language of work readiness, which don't really translate to some of the goals we have at the end, or to our values, you know, making lifelong letters, making good citizens, that's not even in here at all. How we think about that part of our process of what we want to kind of engage with our kids, some of those things are missing. And I remember I said when I was going to do my campaign that I was going to make sure that all of our agendas always kind of aligned with our goals for our mission statement, and so I decided I came with that now because it doesn't seem like those are the pillars.
As far as actual actions in pillar one, any suggestions for change?
Geez, I guess I would, once again, my first meeting, but I would want to reach out to the people that are in charge of curriculum, and I'm sure that Brian has already made some action plans for trying to improve our English scores and our testing, but those don't seem to be into the, in the process here. We did a similar thing at Stow, where we tried to create a rhetorical rebranding of how we talked about education, and sometimes that can have some outcomes that don't really try to deliver those basic parts of education down here. So I guess I would want to think about like how you expand like English language arts within the schools, thinking about, I don't know what you guys have done in terms of studies. I know that arts integration is a vital part of thinking about student expressiveness and trying to embody the ideas of the kind of goals we're looking for in education. So I could probably talk about a lot of this because it's kind of what I study, but in terms of specific things that would be in there, I will leave that up to the professionals that we hire to take care of those things. I would just note that the people that did this, it was an health source group that did this for you?
Right.
Yeah, sometimes I'm always suspicious of those groups in the way they put things together, because it looks really neat and it looks really orderly, but there's no real connective tissue that connects those ideas together. And once again, this is just a one-page summary, so there might be more information that you're not privy to.
Right.
But those things don't really coincide, the outcomes at the end don't really follow a logical process of what will lead up to those outcomes. That's it.
So Chris, since you're just coming on board, so this has been quite a lengthy process, I wonder if it would be helpful for you to, for me to arrange a conversation with you and our consultant who's been working on this from Studer Education, and maybe you could share some of that, and I think that might be helpful. Are there any other comments or thoughts?
So I know that the committee, the strategic planning committee, steering committee, you know, we talked about the pillars and, and some of the strategies, but what, what part of it was then that the school district, that your administrative team then took and developed out of that?
I would say more of the input on the action plans and measurable goals. So those, not entirely, but yes.
Anybody else? Review extracurricular staff contract requests. Any concerns or questions? Carry on. Okay, I'm related to next meeting dates, we have a retreat scheduled for May 22nd, and our next school board meeting would be...
13:30.
Yep, 13:30. Okay, we will need to go into close briefly, so thank you very much for coming, thank you principals and administrators for coming in and keeping the meeting. It'll take a five minutes, right?